YZeta School Board Work Session for May 27, 2025.
Good afternoon. The time is now four o'clock. The YZeta Public Schools Board of Education Work Session for Tuesday, May 27, 2025, will please come to order. We'll start with introductions beginning from my right.
Heidi Kader.
Sheila Pryor.
Dan Janestra.
Boris Bendy.
Valentina Ayers.
Sarah Johansson.
Chase Anderson.
And I'm Milin Sohoni. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. As a reminder, the board does not vote on any item at the work session this work session. This afternoon, we have two items on the agenda. First, we have Finance and Operations Reports. Dr. Anderson will introduce Hazel Reinhardt, the State Demographer, who will present the Enrollment Projections Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and those in attendance here this afternoon. It is my pleasure to introduce somebody who's not new to our school district, Hazel Reinhardt, who's done a number of enrollment projections for us over the years, and we welcome her back today to provide us with an overview of her latest study of our community. And we look forward to hearing what the current trends are and what the projections are for future years and putting that into context, maybe with the larger metro area and the state demographic changes. And we'll hear about a number of interesting related topics to our own enrollment growth here within the school district. So Hazel, welcome back. It's wonderful to see you, and thanks so much for the work you've done for us and for the presentation you're going to give to us here this afternoon.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Board Chair and Board Members. It's my pleasure to be here. I will get started here. I want to preface this by talking a little bit about the environment in which we are now making school enrollment projections that's even somewhat different than it was even five years ago. And the biggest difference is we are now really confronted with low fertility, that is, the number of children a woman has to the end of childbearing. And replacement is 2.11. Minnesota was at 1.73 in 2023, which is a little higher than the U.S. at 1.62. Minnesota hasn't been much above 1.8 for a number of years now, which means that we are not replacing ourselves, that we are very dependent on immigration, either domestic or international, for any growth. And the significance for school enrollment is that it has resulted in a decreasing number of births, and those births translate into kindergarten students five and six years into the future. Fertility rates vary by race, ethnicity, and by urban/rural, and they are lower in urban areas than they are in rural areas. The aging of the population is something we've talked about for several decades now, but some of its most profound effects are now being felt. And I think from the district's point of view, the significance lies, and I will argue and show you numbers, that I think it's beginning to be evident in a changing mix of housing, and that you're getting housing types that have very low yields of school-aged children per unit. And so that's one way it affects enrollment in schools. And then, of course, a smaller percentage of households have children. So while you may have an increasing number of housing units in households, it is not related so directly to the number of children. We're also moving less in the United States. For most of the time since the Second World War, about 20% of all Americans change their address every year. Now, we're below 10%, and the significance of that is not so much people who could potentially move into the district, but the fact that people will stay in their housing much longer than they would have even 10 years ago. So we just have less turnover. Less immigration from abroad, and that certainly is very much up in the air right now, but I don't anticipate that we will see that kind of inflow that we saw in the past few years, at least in the next four or five years. I don't know. Slower growth, and that is a big, big factor, because as we have slower growth, we get perilously close in Minnesota to the number of deaths being equal to the number of births. And so, and that really produces slower growth. So slower growth is another factor. Competition for students in Minnesota is increasing. It has, from the day that we created open enrollment, and a higher percentage of students every year open enroll out of their district of residence, charter school, a phenomenon which there's, in my opinion, there seems to be no end. In Minnesota, it poses an too-open. And you have been blessed without that much competition, but I don't think you should count on it never occurring. And then the lingering effects of COVID. And there are a couple of places in your enrollment that I would have to say it's just not clear, whether you have totally recovered from the effect of COVID or you still have some lingering effects. We know statewide and nationwide that enrollment and other education options increased as a result of COVID, especially students going to private school and being homeschooled, and higher rates of absenteeism. And I don't know if you've experienced that or not, but that's been a national phenomena called out in many districts. So that's the kind of environment in which we're now thinking about the future, well. But first, let's look at the past 10 years, and I could look at 15 to 20 years, the past of YZeta enrollment. But let's think about the past 10 years. You had an enormous enrollment increase of almost 20% over 2,000 students. And with open enrollment closed, only 1.8% of your students are non-residents. So basically, what we're looking at is the growth of resident enrollment. And that's unique also, because most districts now see a lot of growth driven by open enrollment. The school-age population in the district increased about 25%. A little higher rate than your resident enrollment, and you lost a little bit of share, but nothing compared to what is pretty typical in the metro area. Most districts lose in this 10-year period, oh, probably four percentage points of share. So you've done very, very well. That all said and done, you still had a loss of 935 students to other public options. However, it's the non-public schools that enroll more students than other public options. So that non-public is really your competition. What is significant in my mind and a harbinger of the future is the shift that has occurred in what is driving your enrollment growth. Historically, your enrollment growth has been driven by K5. Okay? And in this past 10 years, if you look at the first years, 2014, 15 to 2019, 20, and I want to avoid that 2020 because of the pandemic, but 61% of the increase in your enrollment was in K5. Since 2019, 20, only 23% of your growth is in K5. And that has, in my opinion, implications for the future, that it is a harbinger of slower enrollment growth. Because every growing district that I've ever worked with, their enrollment growth is always driven by elementary. And then I'm just showing you K12 enrollment, and you can see the dip here in the pandemic, 2019, or 2020, 21. But what's interesting to me is you did not really recover the second, the following year. Most schools had a bump up, and you did not. And so if you look at that trajectory, you certainly, you know, I don't know whether 2023, 24, or 24, 25 are still affected by it or not. But we can see its effect there. And then on the competition, I'm looking here at, you can see the non-public schools, and they increased and they dipped and went down a little bit this year. And then you see the open enrollment and the homeschool. Homeschool is such a minor factor in this district that it's not, it's not worth the conversation. But the non-public, public is. There are some other key findings that I would highlight. One is what's happened to births. We talked about fertility, but now we see its effect. Births in Minnesota from 2008 to 2024. And 2008 is important, because it's still kids who are in school in 2014. Decline, 14.3% in Minnesota, 14.4% in Hennepin County, but only 10% in suburban Hennepin County. And I'm defining suburban Hennepin County as Hennepin County minus Minneapolis. The YZeta Public Schools saw some natural decrease, and by that, we'll talk a little bit more about it, but it's the difference between the size of the incoming kindergarten class and the previous year's grade 12. And you saw some of that, just small numbers occurring since 2019, 20, and the projections say that that will become a major factor in the next 10 years. And you experienced net in-migration eight of the past 10 years, the exceptions, of course, being the pandemic year and the following year. And when we talk about net in-migration, we're talking about the number. It's not necessarily the same student. It's the number of students in grade. And here, I'm just showing you the births in Hennepin County and suburban Hennepin County. Suburban Hennepin County's share of the county increased a little bit in the last few years, but you can see how the sort of, in 2008, then it went down. 2008, of course, known as the Great Recession. Then down, and then a little curve up, and now down. And then 2024, up slightly. These are provisional numbers, but I think in the case of Hennepin County and suburban Hennepin County, not likely to change very much. And then I'm showing you the actual numbers as well, so you can see how that has changed over time and how it has really sort of fallen since 2019. And then 2020, down, up a little bit in 21, but just really, again, down in 23. And I promised you that we talk about natural increase/decrease. Well, this is something that people like myself, demographers, like. It may not mean as much to others, but on the left column, we have the year-over-year change and the percentage. And then the natural increase/decrease is the difference between, as I said, the K and the grade 12 the previous year. And I've highlighted in yellow the years that have been minus, and you can see they are not huge numbers, but they really have occurred since the pandemic year, 19. That's when it starts to occur. And then if you look at net migration, that is, that excess number of students that we didn't anticipate, if simply every grade had moved forward at the same size. And I'd call your attention to, of course, we have the two minus numbers in the pandemic and the subsequent year, but the last three years is 286, 303, 344. And we'll look at that 344 more carefully, because it's almost all driven in a single-grade transition. And I don't know that that will continue to be as high as it has been in the past. So it seems to me that that 300 or around there is a pretty good number if we want to think about the last three years. And you can see that you had 380 in 15, 16, but otherwise, you were always below the 300 number. So it seems to me, if you think about this in terms of development and new units, that when you think of 300 or 330, 40, net in-migration every year, it's a pretty robust number. So enough about the past. Let's turn our minds to the future. I'm going to be making these projections via Cohort Survival Method, which is a classic way of making population projections. It's both simple, but it has the complexity and the assumptions you have to make. Its greatest strength, of course, is that, just as our age, we move a grade forward, roll it forward, and they roll on through. So we can see if we start to have smaller elementary grades, that that's going to eventually affect high school, middle school, high school, and so on and so forth. It requires making projections for kindergarten, of which resident births will be the proxy that I'll use. And then my net migration or survival rates, which is the percentage of students you retain, you lose, or you gain, and a grade-to-grade progression as well. So those are the two assumptions, and we'll talk about that a bit. Now, births are reported on a calendar year, and I adjust them to a kindergarten pool. And by that, I mean that the estimate of the number of children who are age five by September 1st enter kindergarten, which is law in Minnesota. So that's what I mean by the kindergarten pool. And here is YZeta's percentage of that pool. And this, again, is, as you see it here in a graphic form, sort of interesting. You had the decline in the pandemic year, and that decline occurred because some kids were homeschooled or went to a private school. But many potential kindergarten students were simply redshirted. They simply didn't attend school at all. And by state law, you're not required to be in school at the age of five, so they didn't. But if you look at those percentages, it was at the high in your history in 2019, 20. And now, forgetting the pandemic year, and even, you can see, it seems to have trended, or seems to be trending down a little bit. In making projections, I make one assumption that it continues to go up and one that it sort of stays at this, our current percentage. But you can see that. And then here are the numbers, and you can see the percentages. I highlight in red, of course, the pandemic year, and the pool, and the size of the pool. And what, to me, is significant, and I want to have you bear in mind, that we now have born the children who will be kindergarteners in 2029, 30. So we do have a window five years into the future without speculation as to the number that will be born. And you will notice that that pool decreases in size. So either your percentage has to increase significantly or your enrollment at kindergarten will decrease. The kindergarten to birth ratios, or you could call it a capture rate of that pool, I made an assumption now for the projections of a low of 8.83%, which is the average of the past two years, and then a high of 9.1. Okay? Because you did make nine once, and it's very possible to go on. Now, later talk, as I moved this out 20 years, that I moved it to 10%, but, you know, and we could quibble about that. Maybe it should be 9.2. I mean, but then we just start to play the game with numbers, you know, but we could see that. So what I'm saying is that I have one, that low one, which is more like it has been the past two years, and the high one that shows a little growth. And then, longer term, I took the projections made in 2004 by the Minnesota State Demography Center for Hennepin County's zero-year-olds. And Hennepin County increased a little bit at 65% of county births. And the pool decreases, we will see that. And we know that suburban Hennepin County births decreased 7.3% from 2019 to 24, know that. And those projections made by the state show that Hennepin County's population will decrease by 2.5% as we get into the 2030s. So just kind of the context around all of this. So here's the kindergarten pool for suburban Hennepin County, and 2029, 30 should be bolded as well. But those represent children who have already been born. And then you can see that it drifts down, you know, about 40 some over the time period. So it's not a huge decline, but some would call it basically flat. And the significance of that, of course, is that if that pool is flat, then your percentage has to go up for kindergarten to increase in size. So here are the kindergarten projections, is very simple arithmetic. Look at the pool and multiply it by these percentages, the 8.83 and the 9.10. And what's significant to me, I added up here at the end of 10 years and then compare it with the number of kindergarten students in the last 10 years. And so you can see, we simply have fewer kindergarten students going into the student body over this next, this projected 10 years. And then I'm looking at projected Hennepin resident births, kindergartens 2030, 31, and beyond. And this, these are the projections based on the State Demography Center projections for Hennepin County. So you see the projected number of births, and you see then Hennepin County at 65%, suburban Hennepin County at 65%. And you can see that pool declining into 2035, which are kind of the kids of 2040. I sometimes say to people, let's leave some problems for some other folks. We don't have to try and solve them all. Now, first of all, we have to say, are those projections realistic? Well, they fit with all their other numbers, projections that they've made for Hennepin County. The variable in here is, would the number of suburban Hennepin County births increase from 65% to 66 or 67? And although I looked at the projections for the city of Minneapolis, and that's shown to be growing, although not necessarily the number of births, but just to, you know, kind of full disclosure, what could happen. Now, we really ask ourselves, how can this be? Well, fertility could rise a little, which would lift the numbers somewhat. But as I said, Minnesota has not had a track record of being much beyond 1.8 for some time. But we need to remember that the population is aging. And according to these projections, women of prime childbearing age of 25 to 34 will decrease in actual number in 2033 and thereafter in Hennepin County. And we also are dealing with slower growth. As I mentioned, immigration from abroad has kept Minnesota growing for more than 25 years. We've been very dependent on that. And then the projected decline of 2.5% in 20 years, from 2024, 25 to 2044, 45, in Hennepin County population. In other words, there's, you know, not much indication that the county is going to be booming. So that's the thoughts on kindergarten and births. Now, let's look to the net migration, the survival rates of people moving in. As I've mentioned before, except for the pandemic year and the following year, it's been positive the past 10 years, and before that, 10 years, positive. What's significant is that your pattern is a little different than most other metro-area districts. You have a consistent net inflow of students between kindergarten and grade one. And we'll look at that, and it's consistent over time. And I don't know whether that means they've tried something else and then come to the public schools. I don't think that all of it is simply because people are moving into the district. I don't know. But that's one factor. And the other is, of course, the consistent net inflow, grade five to six, the beginning of middle school. Now, that is more typical, but that's very pronounced here. What makes you, another thing that makes you somewhat unique is that you have no consistent inflow between grade eight and grade nine, the beginning of high school. And most schools, public school systems, have a net inflow at the beginning of high school. It says to me that the decision of where you're going to go to school in this district is made at the middle school, and then that's it. And here I show you, there's a lot of numbers here, but I want to show you what captured my attention in this past year of net migration, and I've highlighted it in yellow, is that we had a net inflow of 82 students between grade eight and nine. And if you look historically, that is at least 40 above of any other year. And most years, you just didn't have many students at all, which leads me to believe that that total net in-migration of 344 is not likely to be sustained, because I don't think you'll see 82 every year. But look at the top number of the number of kids that come from kinder, they weren't enrolled in kindergarten, but they're enrolled in grade one. And that's really, really substantial number, net inflow. And then we see the five to six, the numbers vary, but certainly 30, 40 every year, some years more. And then this is just looking at them aggregated. And again, my point is that the increase at nine to 12 this past year is really driven by the grade eight to nine inflow. You see 111 this year. Historic pattern is a loss, really, those grades. I'd also call your attention that the inflow at K5 was strong this past year, stronger the previous year. You can see how it fluctuates around 6 to 8, a little more stable. And then, those were the raw numbers, and here are the survival rates. I see I got a decimal point in the wrong place. It's, I look at it 100 times and never see it, and I see it on the screen immediately. But basically, except for 11 to 12, you always have a net inflow of students. So for the low, I took the average of the past three years, and I removed the very obvious outliers when I looked at a five-year history. Said, oh, there's one year here that is really out of the trend line. Got rid of it, and the other is simply the average of the past five years. And so the higher one does produce more elementary students, but significantly, it produces more middle school and high school students. And we'll see that very clearly. I take, use the low K assumption here and look at what the effect of the survival rates are. And you can see that, and actually, we don't have to try and do this. The difference is 532 students in total enrollment. 122 of those are K5, or about 20 students per grade. 139 are in 68, about 46 per grade, and 271 are at the high school, about 68. So the higher migration assumption... So the higher, um, migration assumption is really driving a much larger high school, that, uh, at the elementary level, it, it isn't, isn't that significant? So when you want to think about which of these you, you want to, I have greater confidence in, that's, that's how I would think about it. Now, in the next ten years, uh, I'm projecting slower enrollment growth from twelve thousand seven sixty to only thirteen oh fifty-two or thirteen eight seventy-four. An increase of two point three to eight point seven percent at the highest. And, and you, you know, have to ask yourself how after nearly twenty percent in ten years, we're now down to less than ten percent in ten years? Well, uh, these projections have within them, they're averaging on the net migration from the low of about two hundred and sixty per year to the high of three thirty-three per year. And as we've looked at the past three hundred and three, three hundred and thirty-three per year is a, is pretty, uh, robust growth. But the big factor is that now natural decrease averages two hundred and six to two hundred and forty-seven students per year. Because the kindergarten are, are graduating out, much larger grades. So puts real downward pressure on the. And the difference between the highest and lowest projection, about two hundred and forty-one students, so it's, it's, it's not all that significant. And then what you see here as it's arrayed is that, uh, the difference starts to occur in the second five years of, of the projection. Uh, and both of them show enrollment sort of plateauing a little bit and then showing s, uh, evidence of a slight downward, uh, tick in this ten years. Then if we want to look at it, K-five, six, eight, nine, twelve, um, the change in the first five years, uh, from a loss of sixty-seven students at K-five to a loss of three thirty-six, sixty-seven, I think we might say is essentially flat. Uh, the loss then accelerates as you get into the second, uh, five years of the ten year projection. You see really substantial growth at six-eight, uh, the middle school in the first five years. Now these are kids, uh, you know, who are, uh, they're not, they're not being affected by any, uh, birth projections. They're in the system, they're rolling, uh, forward. And then a very substantial increase at, uh, the high school as well. And then you see in the second five years, I pointed out that the K-five continues to have decline. Uh, you get most of the growth in the middle school in the first five years, the second five years, you're getting those lower kindergarten numbers rolling into, uh, middle school in, in, uh, after two thousand, uh, thirty. And then you see that the high school estimate could be a thousand students, larger than it is today in ten years. So I made projections for individual schools and, uh, I always say that those projections need to be taken, uh, with a grain of salt, uh, because the larger the number, the, the more stable your projections are likely to be. But these boundary changes, uh, really interrupt any trend line. And so it becomes very difficult to, uh, uh, get a sense of, of what that trend might be. And we're going to have boundary changes at the elementary level again this fall. The middle school have changed several times now and will change again. And of course that's made that really difficult. Uh, let's talk about the individual schools, the elementaries. Uh, the, the sum, and we'll look at the numbers in a second, the sum of the independently made elementary school projections are a good fit with the district-wide projection. That doesn't mean the individual school projections are accurate, but it says that they're, they're in the, uh, ballpark if they have to be moved around. The largest projected decreases are in Gleason Lake and Greenwood. And that really cuts stems from the fact that those two schools have very large classes in like the third, fourth, uh, grades now. And if they are replaced by smaller, uh, number of kindergarten students, as those older, uh, classes age out, that enrollment contracts. Uh, and then the largest projected increase is that Meadow Ridge. And you'll see here, the numbers, you see that the Greenwood is, is, uh, very substantial. And, and as I look at it, either, either the survival rates are, are, don't hold. My, my assumption was that the survival rates that were present prior to the boundaries changes would pretty much be in place, that most of the areas likely, you know, it wasn't really half and half, that, that it will retain those characteristics. And then you see the, the growth at Meadow Ridge. A little decline at North Woods, uh, the others, uh, you know, basically pretty flat. So the loss at Gleason Lake and Greenwood, the big increase at Meadow Ridge. So that is a, uh, well, I'll go back here. And you can see that the sum was, uh, of them was only, um, one student higher in ten years, the sum of the independently made versus the district-wide. So it's very, very close. The middle school is a less happy story from my perspective and I told Superintendent Anderson that I'm willing to take another shot at, uh, the middle school numbers. The sum of the independently made middle school projections is not as good a fit with the district, it's a difference of some thirty students or more. That's a, a little too much in my opinion. Uh, and Central initially shows enrollment decline, but then bounces up again. And I can identify it exactly to the size of the fifth grade at North Woods. So, I, I, and, uh, as you can see here, I can, in the, uh, survival rates used, I cannot get east, much growth than east, and I get a lot of growth in west. So I don't, I don't know. That, I have to try something a, a little different there. But you can see there, the difference in, in the sum versus the, uh, I think it's fifty, sixty there. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a good fit. And then the high school, uh, increase in, uh, of five years, five hundred seventy-eight students, almost fifteen percent. And the district-wide projection is of course, the high school projection. What could make these too high or too low? Well, too high is whether the cool, a pool is too large, suburban pool, or YZDA's capture rate decreases. Uh, I don't think the pool is too large. I don't think of these as being too high in that sense. Too low is the, uh, pool is too small or the capture rate increases. And then whether more students choose other options or more choose to remain, choose the YZDA public schools, whether it is because they move in here and choose it or they make a, another, uh, decision. So always what about housing? Well, the relationship between, uh, housing and K-12 enrollment is very complex. I've studied it in four states in some depth. And these principles hold really, that unit type is the most important variable and single family detached units have the highest yield of students per unit. Uh, newer single family homes, uh, yield more students than older single family homes. And when they sell, if they're newer units, they tend to have an increase. If they're older units, they're likely to have a decrease in the number, uh, yield students. And then people say, well, what's a newer home? And I say, anything built two thousand or later, which is twenty-five years, it's not so new. But it really marks a period when, when the style of housing, the floor plans, the amenities really changed. You saw more open floor plans, you saw more owner suites, you saw all of those things that are, uh, highly desired today. And then market value, uh, most of us hold the view, or think we do, that, uh, less expensive units will yield more children. That is not true in any district I've studied. That more expensive units yield more children. And once you, at least here in Minnesota, once units get to about one point five million, you can almost guarantee that it will be private schools. Okay. Uh, and then of course, we're building more units for seniors, fifty-five plus, which really means eighty plus. And there are no, no children. And the other thought we have is that, oh, they will move from their single family home into this senior thing and we're going to open up homes. No. Um, that, we find all kinds of people come to be closer to their children, that they weren't living in the district or even sometimes in the metro area. And they move into this senior housing. So it's, 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 that's why I call it's very complex. If we look at, uh, housing units built two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four, meaning that we think they should have been able to have been occupied by the fall of that year, because the home building season and selling is really the spring. We can see here that in these five years, we had one thousand four hundred forty-nine single family detached units, uh, three hundred and seventy-six townhomes, a hundred and six apartment units, thirty-eight condos, which by type are very, usually very much like apartments, but it's an ownership and it does make a difference. And so for almost two thousand units. Now the future, tis not easy to, to ferret this out. But what city officials at least are thinking is fairly certain. There are only seven hundred and fifty-six single family detached units, two hundred and forty-nine. And notice in Medina, the, some of those are villas. I put them with townhomes, although I don't know, they, depending on, they may behave like single family, I don't, I don't know. Many more apartment units, many more, uh, condos. And then overall, a slightly, uh, smaller number of units than we had in the past five years. Now that was the thinking here. Minnetonka doesn't expect anything to happen. And I want to talk about Plymouth a little, uh, later, because these are approved units. They've been through the process. Now, what about yields for, per unit? Uh, single family detached vary by district and within the attendance area. I, in your case, I use zero point, zero point six zero. Uh, I'm kind of keen to, to get a, a better measure on that. Uh, in the metro area, I've seen some new units at, uh, down at zero point three seven, which is not very high for, for new single family units. Townhomes are very consistent across all districts across states, zero point two-two, which says to me that the, that the type of people who opt for a townhome are in a similar, uh, family stage. Apartments, again, consistent across all school districts across all states, zero point one-one to zero point one-five. So you need a hundred units to get, uh, you know, eleven kids, fifteen kids. And condominiums yield almost no school-aged children. So it's a form of ownership that just doesn't have any kids. Now what I need to caution you, is students from new housing units do not automatically translate into additional students. And that's the thing. So here's my estimate of the number of students that will be in those new units. Okay? And I'm assuming, um, uh, zero point six zero for the single family, zero point two-two townhomes and zero point one-one to zero point one-five for the apartments. So somewhere, you know, the five hundred and eighty to six hundred students will be in those new units. Now that doesn't mean that they won't necessarily be additional students. And then I'm trying to think about, are the, are the cohort, uh, projections and their survival rates adequate to cover this? And so the first thing is that there are fewer units. The unit type mix changes in twenty to twenty-four, seventy-six percent were single family. Right now only forty-three percent projected to be single family. And I think the cohort projection should cover this because those five hundred seventy-eight to six oh-six students were projecting in that period, thirteen hundred to sixteen sixty-five in net migration in the cohort in that same period of time. So it would mean that your existing units would have to turn over very fast to get kids. So I, I, I think that pretty much will cover it. Now, historically, we've always viewed Medina as the wild card. Okay? Well, uh, in talking with the Plymouth, uh, planning manager, I think Plymouth is also a wild card. Because in a detailed analysis, uh, she has provided the data that in the timeline twenty-five to twenty-nine, these units are not approved, but there's a potential of seven hundred and eight single family detached and a hundred and sixty-two townhomes and eight hundred and seventy-two apartment units. But it's those single family units that I think we want to keep an eye on. And then the city will be, uh, working on their plan for up to two thousand fifty on city center and the station seventy-three, four ninety-four, fifty-five redevelopment. And there she's estimating, you know, almost thirty-eight hundred apartment units. She didn't anticipate that there'll be any single family in that. Uh, and that's, that's for somebody else to worry about. But it's, but it's that seven oh-eight that I think, uh, it would be good to get a little better purchase on whether those will, uh, be approved and, and what the timeline might be. I have been, um, interested in what the longer-term future is for enrollment in this district. And I've been interested in that because we have seen everywhere, we can point to any number of suburbs here in the Twin Cities, that enrollment growth slows dramatically even before the district is built out. And the way it looks is that enrollment peaks and then starts to decline. And it begins with the elementary enrollment. So I ran the model from two thousand thirty-four, thirty-five to two thousand thirty-five, thirty-six to, or thirty-four, thirty-five to two thousand, um, forty-four, forty-five. And I used the, uh, base of the high kindergarten, high migration projection of thirteen thousand eight seventy-four. But I want to point out that if that projection is low, that does affect, uh, moving forward because those students will roll forward. I used the same rate of net migration, about three thirty per year. And then I increased, uh, suburban Hennepin County's share to sixty-six percent of the county and YZDA's share to nine to ten percent of the suburban. And then I get enrollment in two thousand forty-four, forty-five of thirteen thousand seven sixty-one, which is actually a slight decline from the, um, projection of two thousand thirty-four, thirty-five. Then if I make the assumption. assumption that suburban Hennepin becomes 67% of the county's birth, and Wayzetta's share moves from nine to 10% of the pool, I get to 13,984. Now, there are a lot of ifs in all of this, but it suggests to me that after 2034, 35, enrollment is going to kind of plateau out. And the significance of that is that I can, I can list many districts in the untold pain, when they have now surplus buildings in various locations. Wayzetta has been very fortunate in that its population has been willing to shift from one elementary school or one school to another without major catastrophe. But in some districts, it's a pretty dramatic unhappiness. So with that, I'll say thank you. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Hazel. That was a lot of information, a lot of numbers there to digest. Forty-six slides, right? Forty-four, forty-five, forty-six slides? That's the number I will remember. So, board colleagues, any questions, comments? Oh, go ahead, Sheila.
And maybe this isn't a question for you, maybe it's for Chase. There was a table where you showed, I think, an 82, an increase of 80, of something at the high school that was kind of an outlier. Is that because of our, we had open enrollment for that year?
We had a one-year window where we brought in, for this current school year, ninth and 10th grade students. I think we brought in about 70. I'm looking at Jen, is that 65 to 70, I think, total? Most of which were ninth grade, but there were some 10th grade as well. So that is kind of an artificial inflation at that level. But we've closed that again, and we won't have that bump for the coming year.
Thank you. This is always super fascinating. I, I have a comment about that. I think it shows what opening, open enrollment up does, even when it's a small little bit, like what that, what that does. And so I think that teaches us something as well, even though the spike is artificial for the long-term projections. My question for you goes to the study of the four states and the yields that come out of apartments and townhomes and whatever. So I remember sitting at the board table back in the other, and, and you said to us that these were the averages for apartment yields and, and home yields, but that at least back in maybe our 2015, 16 growth, that we were exceeding those projections, that we would, that we were yielding.
Single family.
Okay. And not, I thought at one point you had said apartments as well. Do you feel like we don't, we don't do that? And, but do you still feel like we exceed in the single family yields?
I thought the 0.6, it's not the highest one could go. I, I think one could go 0.7. That's why I'm eager to pursue this a little further, because I, I think it's important as you look at housing and what you might expect. But I have seen elsewhere in the northern part of Hennepin County, about 0.57. In Anoka County, I've seen an area that was only 0.37 for new units. I know that in District 196, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan, that the new units that have come on, single family, have not had the yield that the previous new units had. So I think it's, it's one thing, we can study it further here, and I think we want to do that. But with lower fertility, Laurie, you know, you start to just have smaller families moving in.
Can I ask a, a question too about, in the southern half of our district, as you know, we have many existing homes. And so what we're seeing is the, the redevelopment of those existing homes typically with a larger amount of square footage. Does that at all impact our, if we start to see maybe starter homes being constructed to be larger family homes or middle family homes, that that would increase, that would impact yields at all?
Yes. Based on Edina, I would tell you, yes, it will. And then you, what you need to be mindful of is what the value of the home is. Because if it gets to be, you know, very high value, then you'll see private school.
Well, thank you so much. This is just an incredible set of information, research to go into it, and it's very appreciated. My question is kind of in terms of how growth can be get more growth. So one conversation we've had in committee is, if we start seeing roads built, you know, connecting north and south, let's say, within Medina, that'll encourage more growth. So in your estimates, did you have kind of a, if we start seeing growth, if we start seeing more roads connecting people, connecting neighborhoods, was that kind of factored into your projections?
No. And I'll tell you why. I like to see plans. Because, let's start, think about this realistically. If nothing is on paper and already discussed, it's not going to happen in the next five years. I mean, we start to think about just the time it takes. And we, you know, I've been working with this district a long, long time. And we've talked about Medina every time. And it's, it's not clear to me whether that will ever develop at, I mean, that's why I say it is the wild card. I think more immediately the wild card is Plymouth, and those potential single family units there. Because they are, they're already on paper, they're being discussed, they haven't been approved through the planning process, but they're, they're already been. But if nothing has been put on paper, we're looking minimum of five years and maybe 10.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much.
I have a follow-up question on that, because I was curious when you went through the slides. I'm sure that the 748 increased homes in Plymouth, that's just within the footprint of the Wayzetta Schools.
Yes, it is. The Wayzetta Schools, yes, yes, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I think that, you know, from the immediate foreseeable time in which you are seeking to manage something, those are the ones that are to keep a close eye on.
I will try to formulate my question as I go, so to speak. But how, is there some sort of a formula based on other districts? Some districts already reached their limit capacity when you don't have enough land. I mean, the land was already developed, used, whatever was, so there is not that much of a growth. There probably it's easier to prognosis, to make prognosis, versus here, we have land, but it is hard to know when, when people, and what, when do you think that we will reach that time when our district will be more into, like, we used all the land? At about what time?
I, yeah, I'm, I can't project that, because it has, it has everything to do with how fast or how slowly Hennepin County grows. And that's why that projection showing that no growth in the county after a certain period, then that really would slow down building. I'll tell you, there are districts where this has happened, and they still have a lot of land to develop. In 196, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan, South Washington, Shakopee. And those are all, at the moment, that happened in Bloomington many years ago, but there was, West Bloomington still was to be developed when the enrollment plateaued and, and then started to decline. So my point, my point is that we have a lot of evidence that plateauing of enrollment occurs before the district is fully built out. And, and that's, you know, I think you've, you've been very, very prudent, but it's one of the things, you know, you just want to be mindful of. Let's see who else. Shakopee is a very dramatic example. Enrollment declining after, in, in the 2000 to 2010, it was the fastest growing county in the U.S.
Interesting.
You know, it just, all of a sudden, it's over.
Hazel, I have a follow-up on that question. I'm curious, do you have, what are the variables that cause that premature plateauing before it completely fills out? What, what causes that?
Because the pop, existing population, see, what happens, it becomes a ratio. The number of housing units you have is so enormous to the potential that can be built. And, and the population in those existing units is aging. Aging, at least aging out of the school, school age.
So it's kind of that concept we use sometimes of aging in place, so to speak?
Aging in place.
And I'm wondering too, as land becomes more scarce?
As it becomes more expensive.
Yeah, I was wondering.
As it becomes more expensive. If we look at the, at the growth trajectory out of the twin, the core of the Twin Cities, it's really along the I-94 corridor. And so if land is, is cheaper as you move north of here, into the Buffalo District, and then into the Elk River, and then into St. Michael, Albertville. At this, this point, I'm, I am working in Elk River, and what they are now seeing is more expensive units than they previously had, that they're no longer seeing the growth in what they would call starter homes, but, but more expensive units. And it's reflected that they are now, the net in migration is, is later elementary, middle school, not the lower elementary. So it's kind of move-up housing. So it's that, this, this district has had really more expensive housing. And the growth, so I, you know, that's, but I, I would envision that, and that's the other thing that happens, is after something is maybe two-thirds, three-quarters built, that land price really goes up. So I, I, I just think it's something, you, you know, you, that you don't assume that growth is inevitable after the period of very rapid growth.
First of all, thank you for compiling all of this. I know it's quite the task, and we really appreciate, this is the second time that I've, I've been able to hear your read on things, and so I appreciate that very much. My question is, there was a slide where you had capture rates?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm curious to know, so it looks like there's a decline as we're looking, we're going to capture less, right? But I'm curious to know, is there a cycle involved? Because as I was looking at it, it almost looked like a six- or seven-year cycle, where it kind of goes up, peaks, and then starts to come back down. And I wonder if there's another peak that's coming, and then it will go down again. Because, you know, as you think about, as families are building, there's kind of a phase where we all have our kids, and then it cycles through.
The, the capture rate on the kindergarten, which I think is what you're referring to, is affected by two things. One is development elsewhere in Hennepin, suburban Hennepin County, okay, which is affecting it. And the second would be competition within the district for students. And I have, I've been doing this for a long time. I have not seen competition decrease. That's the, I just saw.
Yeah, your question, Sheila. Yeah, go ahead.
I do have another question. So I understand that we don't want to take for granted that we will grow forever, and there's a, really a worldwide trend for, you know, lower birth rates and fewer children for families. It seems like the projections are that we are still going to get more students, and we are running out of room currently. So I guess, you know, if we're looking out five and 10 years, does, where does that leave us? I mean, we still have to build for the increase. And then at some point, yes, we might have to either hope that we can fill the space with open enrollment, or, I mean, there will be buildings closing. I guess, how do we balance having enough space for, you know, in the next five to 10 years with not overbuilding?
I will be very bold and say, you can manage your enrollment. I see you as so desirable that you open up open enrollment, and you can fill however many seats you want. That's, it's the question of whether you're, you know, of whether your community wants to build buildings that non-residents primarily use. That's the issue. But, but you're highly desirable. You can fill the seats.
So speaking of competition, the chart you showed where the non-public versus public, it was intriguing, because I didn't realize it was double. So almost every year, except probably the recent years, it has been doubled. So when the growth stops, and again, I'm looking at kind of, I'm-
Their, their enrollment is likely to go down as well.
Okay. So purely going based on supply and demand, right? Have you seen students moving from non-public to public? And hence, public growth might still happen, whereas overall stays the same?
Students moved from non-public to public, oh, until the pandemic, certainly for almost 20 years in Minnesota. Okay? And come the pandemic ended that, and non-public increased. Now, not huge numbers, I know I want to, you know, but it increased. And many people felt, among them, that, because most non-publics held in-person classes, okay, that students would go back to the public school, but that did not happen. So I now think that we're probably going to see these numbers at least hold in the non-public until they're too affected by the kindergarten. The challenge, of course, for non-public schools is exactly the same as public schools, is when do you ever run out of physical space? And how do you finance building? I, I witnessed something very dramatic. A Catholic school in Edina put on a huge addition and is filled. And I would describe, they bet big, and they got, got the students. So, but again, it's a parish- So, but again, it's a parish with the means to do it. And I think that's that's one of the factors. I don't know what the capacity of Brick or Blake is because they are one of your competitors. You know, to increase, whether they desire to increase, that's number one. And number two, you know, what the financial capacity is. Because you have to borrow money. I mean, that's, so you have to have some way of doing that. But the decline in kindergarten, that's, you know, going to.
Right. Yeah, and obviously, I'm generalizing the data, so it's not the case in every scenario. But most of the times when we hear about somebody going to kindergarten, other than COVID or the procedures around COVID, is mainly because of class sizes, right? So when we get to that optimum number and now class sizes are better, maybe there is an opportunity to bring those students back in. So that's where I was asking, should we be considering, now that we have doubled the number of students in non-public, could that be a factor that eventually we would see some transition from non-public to public?
The surveys I've seen suggest the movement is more tied to values than it is per se to class size. You know, and the whole, you know, the whole value system. So, but I mean, I think what you're raising is an interesting issue. And that is, what do you advertise, what do you promote? About, you know, is it smaller class size? Is it, is it the performance achievement of students? You know, that's, how you position yourself, how you market yourself? How do people come to know you? And even within the district, you know, what's people, what's your image? All of those things, brand.
Thank you.
So a growing trend that we're kind of seeing, at least or hearing in the media is this, you know, overall maybe push for deregulation in housing, you know, to build more, to produce more and whatnot. So if we do see deregulation in housing, is that something that would register in our district? Would there be ways that we could, you know, notice that, see that?
Well, what we have observed thus far is that the suburban communities have been pretty effective in pushing back on that. If you look at the two bills that were in the legislature this last session and were defeated, it was both suburbs and greater Minnesota communities who said, you know, this is too much of one size fits all, that we want more latitude to deal with our local situation. I think the larger issue probably for you is not the number of units, but the price point of the units and the extent to which the community would become more socio-economically diverse than it is now.
And speaking to that price point, is there kind of a range of home values where we see a spike in, okay, you know, this cost of home is going to bring in more children than let's say another?
It varies by district. In this district, kind of the sweet point was it'd been about a half a million to three quarters of a million dollar unit. And when it got over that, now prices keep on moving, so that keeps on moving up. But relatively expensive units by metro area standards have in this district produced school age children.
Thank you so much.
When you mentioned about COVID and some families moving to private schools because obviously they wanted to have interactions with, directly with teachers versus what public schools used. But you are saying that it's, yes, originally that would happen, what that's drove some parents away from public schools. But then you mentioned about values. Can you clarify more about that?
Oh my. I think, I think the easiest shorthand to say is that private schools that are, have religious affiliation tend to be less woke than the public schools have been. They tend, although I know from people inside say, it isn't what it was 20 years ago, tend to be a little more disciplined. People, there are families that like the uniform aspect of it. I mean, there's just a whole range of things.
So would you say, in conclusion, if we would like to have some children coming towards public schools, we probably need to consider values too? I mean, to think, what kind of values are we holding?
Every public school I have been in, in Minnesota, has a statement of values. I see, when I say these values, it probably, some of them are simply religious, faith-based. Some of them are around these very flashpoint issues of transgender, critical race theory, those sorts of things. Because as I say, every public school, I mean, has posted about respect, about, you know, equal fairness, whatever. So it's not that public schools don't promote values, but the, there are some real flashpoints in our society today. And those are impetus for some families to take children into private schools.
Strong disagreement and then
Strong disagreement, yeah.
They have money to be able to move.
Yeah, because I just, I don't want to, because I know you don't believe it, because public schools do promote values. I mean, they talk about responsibility, fairness, citizenship, that whole range of things. So.
But it's like there are some disagreements about some what.
Yes. And if you look about, I mean, you read the news on the conflict within the school board in Anoka-Hanipin, which is Minnesota's largest enrollment district, you can see how these issues become very contentious.
Thank you very much. I was impressed, to be honest, how we are holding all the numbers. Obviously, you spent quite a bit of time on this, but thank you for giving some analysis.
Okay, thank you. I think, so I have one comment. You talked about District 196. I remember two years ago, they actually had passed a referendum close to half a billion dollars for three schools. Yeah, so they are going absolutely. I have three questions. So Plymouth, first of all, I was surprised that Plymouth has so much growth potential, you know, what, 700 plus houses? So do you think many of them, or most of them, or at least a big chunk of them are the 1.5 million dollar plus houses?
That I don't know.
And if they are, then we are not going to benefit?
Well, I didn't quiz the planning manager.
Okay.
You know, because I asked, you know, for the data and she was very kind to say, okay, this has been approved. These are on paper, you can see them, but they have not been through the approval process. So I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a question we could oppose. You know, what they anticipated.
But if that information is known, then that can be factored in into finding out whether we will get those students in public schools or they will go to private schools, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just add on that too, if I could, is, yeah, I was kind of taken by that number two when I first saw it. But considering that oftentimes three homes are built on an acre, that's only 250 acres, if my quick math is good. Of available building space within the footprint of Plymouth, in the footprint of the school district, which isn't a lot, really, when you think about it. So that number became less of an outlier for me, I guess, after I thought a little bit more about it. So it'll be interesting to see how that materializes and during what timeframe.
These areas that haven't been through the approval process, they're shown on the materials that the city will give you, you know, listing the land, the acres, what they think the number of units will be and so on and so forth. So, I mean, it's not like it's a dream out there. It's, it's had some work done on it.
Yeah. Corcoran, on the other hand, has so much open space that it's not hard to imagine that they will have many, many houses built over the years, right? So in your estimation for the growth of the high school from the current 4,000 something to 4,500 or something like that, about 500 increase, did you factor in the open enrollment as well for the next few years or no?
I assume not.
Not, okay.
These are, are your kids rolling through.
Okay. And I knew I had one more question, actually, if I can read my own handwriting here. Oh, so the non-public schools that you refer to, does include charter schools or no?
No.
Okay.
Charter schools are.
It's a public school, right? Right, okay.
Yeah. And the, from a data point of view, the Minnesota Department of Education will provide, does provide reports, charter school enrollment of district residents. So you can see your number of district residents. Non-public schools is, that's a bit easier. Non-public schools are asked to report their enrollment to the Minnesota Department of Education. Some have done so very faithfully for years and years and years. Others can be spotty. And then the other thing one has to be careful of is that the way the state then releases those data is they release the enrollment by school of the district in which they are located. Now, in maybe 85, 90% of the time, most of those students are from that district. But there are some outliers of national schools, online schools and the like, that may be located in a district where the enrollment is not from that district or so tiny it isn't. So that's, that's the thing.
Thank you, Hazel. I think if there are no more questions, we appreciate your coming here.
We had one question from Dana.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Hi Hazel, it's kind of hard here when we're in a work session, we're off to the side. Couple of questions, can you, and maybe you answered this for Melon, but the apartment units that are projected on that city center station by, in Plymouth, do we know what kind of housing apartments those are going to be?
No, no, no. The planning manager said, I don't think they will yield any school age children. Okay? And until the city of Plymouth does their plan to 2050, is what the plan will be, we don't know anything. We don't know anything. That's why I separated it, the timeline that could be, could affect you. And out there, who knows?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just has an impact sometimes, depending on the type of housing they're putting in. And then when you talked about Gleason Lake and Greenwood being our elementary that could be losing buildings, or you losing students, did I hear you right? Was that based on our new boundaries or that's based on?
Okay, let me, let me explain how I did this. I looked at the enrollment as of October 1st, 2024. And I looked at the enrollment with the new boundaries as in January of 2025. Okay? And then I calculated the survival rates between those two points in time. And I applied those survival rates going forward. Now, that means that the enrollment for 2025, 26 is probably under-projected a little bit. Okay? Beyond that, if my assumption that the characteristics of the Greenwood area would basically be the same even after the enrollment shifts, if that's a faulty assumption, then those numbers are wrong. But what is so clear is when you look at the data for these schools as it stands and then as it's projected, there are some very large classes. And as those classes age out, and if you're, you know, if you're aging out a class of 160 and you're replacing it with a class of 100, you get decline pretty rapidly.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
So I mean, that's why I say the, we'll have a much better sense after we actually see fall of 2025, 26. Thank you. So.
Okay, well, thank you, Hazel. Thank you for coming and presenting this humongous data. So we'll see you again, maybe another two years. Thank you. All right. The second and final item on the agenda is school board reports. This afternoon, the board will discuss moving to even-year elections. First, Amy Geis, the district's election clerk, will review some information that she had presented to the board on March 3rd with some additions to it. This will be followed by a discussion at the board table. Amy?
Good evening, School Board Superintendent Anderson. As Chair Sahoney mentioned, there were a few questions after the March presentation. So I have some data points to fill you in on and then turn it over to you to discuss amongst yourselves. First, there's been some changes in the current odd-year election districts. On the next slide, I'll review the five that have switched since March. Just as a reminder, District 4 districts are in the lighter blue color. And the three that I highlighted in yellow, they actually are school board elections that are run still by their cities because their city coincides with an odd-year election. So Bloomington, Minnetonka, and St. Louis Park, the districts are not running those odd-year elections. So we are currently down to 21 of 331 districts in Minnesota that have odd-year elections. And then it is expected that East Central will be switching. They just had a meeting in May. They tabled the vote until their June meeting, but they are leaning in that direction. So again, highlighted in yellow are the five districts that have switched to even-year elections since our March meeting and the rest that have switched since the 2003 election. Of note, the only one that has elected to switch by running their next two odd-year elections as a three-year term is Richfield. All the rest have followed with the adding of one-year term to the current. of one-year term to the current boards. Just a review, we saw this before. We spent just shy of 82,000 on the 2023 election and projections still have us at over 100,000 should you choose to run an election for 2025. Again, this was presented before in March, but just as a reminder, you know, the the exponential cost of running the election in odd years, voter confusion, that's more so just a voting location during even year elections, the city and the county run precincts, they each have their own location. We do combined locations. We have five, and they tend to not be where voters go to vote on their even year election. It's a little bit of a mess on Election Day, knowing where to send them. The time it costs the district and the election clerks certainly. Surrounding schools are changing to even years. It just is starting to limit our resources amongst each other of how to run them. It's pretty much a one-man show at each of the districts that have to run odd year elections. And you can read the rest of them. Certainly of note is the legal repercussions. There's several school districts, if you Google "school board elections" in the last two years that have run into issues. It's just a concern. It's a little polarizing. One mistake of opening an envelope, sending it to the wrong place, saying the wrong thing to voters tends to end up in the news. And I kind of consider one of my top jobs keeping us out of the public eye. Appreciate that. The cost savings, you can read through it, but on average, our neighboring districts pay about $5,700 for even year elections. It just depends on how many folks you have running. It's just how much space you take up on a ballot is what we end up paying. But the rest of it is taken off our plate. This is in answer to, I believe Chair Sione asked the question about in previous years, what was the voter turnout? This has, for the last decade, the elections that we've run as a district. You can see votes cast, I want to just be very clear, votes cast is the number of people that walk into a voting place or mail in their ballot and their ballot is run through a machine. That's all it covers. I cannot tell you how many of them correctly voted for the number of people they were supposed to vote for. That data is not recorded on voting machines. So if a ballot went through a machine, this is the votes cast. You'll see all of our odd year elections in 2022. We did have an even year election because we had a vacant seat. There was one seat open. So I can tell you roughly how many votes were cast for school board, but it doesn't take into account over-under votes or spoiled ballots. So it's not really the greatest of projections. I will say Director Janestra did ask about this. And it puts you in the high 50 percentile for those that voted on the school board. Also, just some of the numbers that are slightly different here. Sorry, I'll find my slide. In 2017, you see the turnout was about 15%. In that year, we did run a referendum, a tech levy, building out of Northwoods Elementary School and an operating levy. So that kind of accounts for the higher turnout there. The 2021 election, I don't think we'll ever be able to forget, that was coming off of COVID and lots of very strong constituent feelings around that. And then in 2023, this most recent election, we also had a referendum on there. So not to say for sure that's what accounts for the higher numbers, but that does have a tendency to bring out more voters. And then this is the last slide. Chair Sione put this together. This is kind of a layout, kind of a guide map of what it would mean should you choose to hold a vote or not for changing to even year elections. So I'll leave this on the screen while I open it up for, turn it back over to you for discussion.
All right. Thank you, Amy. I have a quick question first. So do we know for sure that the legislature has not moved on the on the proposal to require?
Yes. So state legislature has closed and they have not. They did not follow through. They did not choose to not do it. They just, it did not end up on the docket for this session.
All right. Thank you so much. Yes. So we will just start with any questions you might have with, for Amy, and then I will I will read the protocol for the next part. So anyone?
Yeah, one question. So Amy, the the cost previous versus, you know, the estimated 60,000, actual was 80,000. Did you say for future elections, odd year, it would be 100,000? Is that?
Yes. Yeah, we have every reason to believe that. And I I have to sit down and make the budget each year for elections and just based off of the need to hire judges and facility costs and things of that nature, it will go over this year.
But there is nothing outlier in there, right?
No, no, that that would be the norm for odd year elections.
Thank you.
But that cost as well that you're projecting, that you haven't run the numbers yet with the, that was a cost that was projected with the thought of us also potentially holding the elections here. So have you run the numbers to think about if the elections, the early voting was held at the District Service Center?
That has changed. Yeah, the District Service Center is going to be the location. The physical location of her, where we hold early, sorry, early voting is not, that's, it's in our buildings. It has to be held in a school building. So that is a zero cost. It's more so the cost of, I mean, a good 90% of it is the cost of personnel to run it. And not not the district salary, the outside personnel that we have to hire.
Okay. So the 100,000 is the estimated cost if we were to keep it odd years. If we were to move it to even years, then potentially can come down to rounding it off 6,000 in that range. Okay?
That's correct.
Thanks.
Ashira, go ahead.
I have two questions. So based on the flow chart, I think I'm understanding it correctly. If if we did want to go to even year elections, I'm not saying we do, if we did and we went to five-year terms, it would affect current board members. If we chose to go to three-year terms, it wouldn't affect current board members unless they were reelected. It would it would affect anybody elected in the 2025 or 2027 elections. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then looking at the years that we would have to have elections in the the two scenarios, the five-year and the three-year term, we would have, we would be asking voters to come out to vote an extra time before 2030. So they would be coming out three times. And if we did the five-year term, they would just be coming out two times before 2030. So it's like throwing another election in there and having two elections to pay for.
That is correct. However, I would just caveat that with that anything that falls on an even year from this point forward would be city-run. And there would be an election. This is not an exclusive school board election. There would be national and state elections that coincide with it. So I would hope that voters are going out for those as well. But yes, just specifically for school board, yes.
This for school board, three, three elections, which for 2030, two of which would be run by the school district.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we at any risk of legislators coming back and changing their position one year, two years from now?
Of course. I mean, they could, it's still live at the district level or at the, sorry, the legislative level. So they could.
I, if I can just add, I asked a question about, do we have any thought that it would come back into the special session? And the report from AMSD is that no, there's not an indication that that it's coming back to the special session. I mean, nobody knows what anyone's going to say, but AMSD's report is that it's it's not. Yes.
Yeah, it was not even taken to the omnibus bill. So it just died way before that. So also coming back, are you talking about coming back this session or in the future?
Anytime.
So next, next year will be, will not be a policy session. It will be a, you know, financial budget session. So the year after that, it could come back. But but that's two years from now.
Two years from now. Okay, thanks.
And just to add, it's been, it's come up on multiple sessions before now, and it hasn't ever gotten any traction.
Yep.
So a couple of questions. I I heard kind of the list of concerns with the school district running the the elections. Is the main driver, would you say is the main driver cost in making a change? Or would the main driver be something else?
I think there's multiple. I'm I'm certainly biased. I don't know that, I'm not even sure it's appropriate for me to answer, to be quite honest. I mean, I have to serve the role as election clerk. I think if I was sitting here in my, in a different role, I could
Fair enough.
answer that more bluntly. But I mean, the brunt of it lies on my personal shoulders. So I'm, I think you need to assess that for yourself.
Would answer, Amy.
Thank you.
The second question I have, and and maybe it's a rhetorical question, and maybe Sarah, you could help speak to it, too, because you've been here the longest. And Chase, maybe you could chime in. But is there a reason that we have kept it in odd years? And what what were those driving reasons? Because this is something that has come up over the years. I remember over the decades, this has come up at the legislature. And I'm curious why Wazetta has stuck to odd years and what those, what that rationale is.
Yeah. I I think that holding, I I think in my experience on the 12 years on the school board, that this has, that this was a, that this was a pillar of, the odd year elections were a pillar of of what we do. And and certainly, we all know everything changed in 2021 in terms of the role of partisanship in our school board elections. But a lot of what our our community had committed to up until that point, and and the reasons why the district had moved it forward, is because of the commitment to nonpartisanship. And and even the best of candidates, if you're running an election concurrent, and and another thing is, is is the opportunity to bring district issues forward to our community where there are not distractions other, in other ways. And so, you know, running against a general election that that could have a gubernatorial election, the entire House up for reelection, or a presidential election, we, that that there's data that relates to the attention paid to down ballot and the commitment. And so, so that is there. I will also, because I'm talking, take the opportunity to, I I listened to one of the AMSD panels, of which there were some legislators that were on the panel, and this question came up to them. This was earlier in the session. And one of the concerns that the panel raised or that one of the legislators, and I cannot recall which legislator she was, I'm sorry, was the cost and the cost of, the cost of elections for school board members specifically. You know, one of the things that we've wanted is, is to make campaigning and service on the board to be accessible for everyone. And running an election where you're seeking to get attention among spending in elections, which has, we know where spending has gone in elections, that it could also make it not accessible for candidates to even choose to run because of their capacity to to fundraise.
Sarah and Chase, based on your experience, so the schools who have been on even year, again, I think they are staying with even year, right? I mean, odds, odd years are getting changed to even years. And Sarah, to your point, because it coincides with the broader election cycles, have you heard of any inherent negative impact? Again, as you said, because everybody's voting for general elections, maybe people are not paying attention to school board candidates and just selecting maybe, you know, incumbents as an example. So that gives, you know, new candidates maybe, they are at disadvantage, right? Those type, have you heard any issues or concerns, like? What's what's your?
Yeah, I'll start with two. I mean, I think, first of all, yes, right? I mean, I think that there's, that there's, you know, less of of attention paid to who's being elected or why. And so so there's that piece. I also think, and and you'll hear me talk about nonpartisanship a lot in this conversation, right? I mean, prior to 2021, Wazetta was held up as a as a model district that was that was not partisan in their school elections. And when we would talk to other districts or other school board members and we would say, well, our board, our elections are nonpartisan, they would laugh at us like we were telling fairy tales. And but but it was true. And and that wouldn't mean that the people serving on the board didn't have partisan affiliations. It's just that we were able to rise above and stand outside those lines. And so, and we did see, you know, other, and these were from districts that had their school board elections running concurrent to even year elections. And so, and it's just, right, it's just impossible. If you're, if you're running for election alongside partisan candidates, you're, it's, you can't avoid it regardless of your intent.
I would maybe just add, too, that I think cost is increasingly a variable that we should consider. I don't know that it needs to be the thing or the one variable that would drive it. The other thing that is nice with the odd year elections is that you have an opportunity of a more captive audience about school issues and topics, which I think has been, Sarah mentioned that, and I know others have along the way as well. So those are two things that would stand out for me, just, you know, stepping aside from the nonpartisanship and the politics of school elections, et cetera. I think that those are the two variables that would stand out for me. So there's multiple right answers, Enrique, for most things. That's always what makes some difficult decisions. There is a trend toward the even year elections in the state, as I think we've heard before as well. And I stepped out for a moment, but I think maybe Amy mentioned that. I don't know. But that is a trend in the state.
And I just wanted to throw another point out there that has nothing to do with the school board election. However, you have to remember that any referendums that were running off cycle, we are still having to foot the bill. Nothing changes. So if we were thinking about a referendum that does not coincide with a general election, that would incur the same cost as running a school board election.
I might just add on that, too. There are strategic reasons for running capital campaigns off the normal cycle because of timelines for bidding and when you have access to workers, et cetera. So there are some timelines that can be conducive to perhaps getting bids that are closer to what the projected costs are and, you know, when the labor's available and supply, all the supply chain things. And that's, we hire a lot of consultants to help us with all those things. But those are a lot of the factors that are taken into consideration. And if you want a building to open by, let's say, the fall of 28, you need to hit certain timelines. And the sooner you know whether you have authority to move forward or not, the better in those, meeting those timelines. So, you know, it is kind of multifaceted and it's it's more than just cost and, you know, the the ability to make sure that talking about the school district to the community on those idea elections, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables that need to be considered and the timing.
Can I build on that a minute? 2017 is a great example for that, though, because if we do, am I correct, Dr. Anderson, that if we did a a general operating levy, that it has to be held in a November election? Right? We can't, we can't ask voters to renew a general operating levy in November. And so, like, 2017 was a fantastic example of a time when we were able to do a general operating levy during a school board election. It was also when we did the tech levy and our school board candidates ran unopposed. So it was a fantastic opportunity to really use that time in November when voters were paying attention and expecting a school board election to talk about school issues and to really raise the level of awareness for the general operating levy and other things. And so, whereas bonding and other elections, we can hold off the November election cycle. And we would have to foot the, a general operating levy that we have to hopefully every eight to 10 years, probably, right? On a cycle of these of these odd year school board elections. And so that would be an election that we would have to incur the cost of anyway. So it doesn't mean even if we move to even years that we would necessarily avoid incurring costs in a November, on a November voting date.
Well, I wanted to start by saying thank you so much to Amy and your team for putting together these materials. They've been very foundational to our understanding and they really mean a lot. I was very, I think, drawn to, you know, the the aspect with regard to partisanship. And I appreciate what Sarah brought up, because I think it goes honestly a lot further than, oh, you know, we're going to be competing with perhaps presidential, a presidential election, a gubernatorial election. It goes so much further than that. And all you have to do is talk to the people who, you know, have to run for school board in an even numbered year. To get any visibility, any attention whatsoever, you have to go to the partisan events. So you've got to go to the DFL and the Republican Party picnics, the DFL and Republican Party conventions, the campaign kickoffs for candidates for legislature. And you have to be prepared, if you, let's say, choose to door knock, to answer for, who are you voting for for president? Who are you going to vote?
Who are you going to vote for for governor? And I will just say, you know, full confidence, full honesty, the school board is not a partisan race, partisan election is not a proper alibi. Voters are not going to buy that. So I think really it preserves the fact that we are nonpartisan and, you know, those people who are thinking about running for the school board for this November election, I think it would be a really inappropriate thing as well for us to, you know, either scrap this upcoming election by extending our terms by a year, or to even change it to three years. I'll say, you know, that at this point, two years ago, I had made the decision to run for the school board a month ago. And just to kind of reward and instill confidence in the district, it wouldn't make sense to change any part of that, because I think it could come off as very exclusionary. I think it also has, you know, really the effect of, I did lose my train of thought there and I apologize. But yeah, it's, it's the combination of partisanship, it's the combination of, you know, the timing. I think if we had made this decision after a new school board had been elected, it would have been more appropriate. But to think about that, that partisanship issue, the fact that school board candidates are going to be on that partisan slate of candidates that's handed out door, door to door, it just, it politicizes something that ultimately is too partisan. I think, I do not believe there's a partisan way to educate a child, and certainly our election should fold in that way. So, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make a comment about the partisan, nonpartisan issue. If I know, if I know correctly, city council and county commissioner elections, they are also nonpartisan, right? So they are, they are a part of the even year elections. They are also lumped in with the other partisan elections, right? State elections, federal elections, but they're also on that ballot, but they're also nonpartisan. So that's one point. The other point is, when only 21 school districts out of 331 school districts, you know, are, are odd year elections, the rest of them do even year elections, they must be doing something right, the rest of them. I agree with many of the points that have been raised about keeping this for the odd year elections. Cost, again, individual, you know, school district cost of $100,000. And if we do a three year reduction, if we do odd year, even year elections and do the select the three year term for board members, then we'll actually have two more elections that will be held in the district. That's another 200,000. That's almost two FTEs. And, you know, I, I feel bad for Amy. If, if we continue to do odd year elections, because then she has to work so much harder. So that's basically all I have to say. I, I, I'm kind of caught in the middle. I don't know, I don't know honestly where I, where I stand at this point. And both sides have convinced me with what they have said, and I don't know where I'm leaning right now, so. Go ahead. Yeah, so, so I mean, I agree. I mean, 200,000 is a lot of money for public school. And you said two FTEs, and that's where my next question was, is there a way? And again, I know it's hard, we are already in the planning process for next financial year, right? Is there a way for us to show benefit or outcome? So let's say if we decide to move it to even years, say this right? Yeah, even years. Let's say we extend the term by one year, so it all aligns. We saved $200,000 for the district, we extended everybody's term by one year. What can we show to public that, hey, I did this with that $200,000? Is there a way for us to show some tangible outcome? Maybe we bring back some music programs? I'm making it up, right? Is there a way for us to show the real value that came out of that 200,000? Or again, yeah, we saved it, but really where would we show it? Any comments or like thoughts?
You're on the finance committee, Paris, you can show.
Well, but we don't go like itemized, right? That's what I'm saying. The 200,000 will go in general, but you know, the zero one bucket.
Yeah.
But, and again, that's where, I mean, I know it's complicated. But again, any thoughts or ideas, is there a way for us to articulate that $200,000 value?
I don't think so. I think it would be difficult to mount a credible set of bullet points on, here's exactly what we were able to do. I mean, it's, sometimes you have to take a look at things that are a cost of doing business. And I think we have to take a look at variables in this case, aside from money. I think we need to be conscious of it. But in the same token, I don't think it should be the sole driver to make the decision, because I think it would be really hard to say, here's what we're able to do as a result of moving to even year elections.
Okay. That's fair.
Just one little thing, as we're whispering back and forth here, just a point of clarification is that, that 100,000 on the election is not, we don't run elections every year or 200,000, so we can't say that's FTE. So I know if Scott or David Drakovich or whoever is whispering in my head to remind us that that's not an ongoing yearly expense, so it wouldn't purchase a teacher on a regular basis. So just wanting to make sure that that's clear.
Agreed, yeah. But it is a hard.
I'm not running for financial, you know? Be clear with that too.
But it is, it is a hard saving. I mean, it clearly shows we can save 200,000 just on two elections and then obviously ongoing. But obviously, we can't relate it back to, okay, what did we do with that 100,000 or 200,000? No, that's fair. Thanks.
So I have a couple of comments. I was originally pretty conflicted about this because of the cost savings. And then I took some time to really think it through. And Chase, I appreciate your comment about the cost of doing business, because I do think there is a cost to doing the business of the district. You know, we as school board members haven't taken a raise in several years, and that's, that's something that we've chosen to do. The nonpartisan piece of it is incredibly, incredibly important, not just to me, but I know that it is incredibly important to our district constituents and to our school families, teaching our children in a nonpartisan way. And expecting that from the top down is really important. If we don't do it ourselves, how can we expect that of our teachers and our principals and everybody who's in our classrooms? So that's something that I think there might be a cost to, to having that. And there might be a cost to, you know, even if it gets a little messy sometimes during elections, at least there is a fighting chance of us demonstrating a commitment to that. And so, you know, as a school board member, I know that my job is to look forward and to plan forward and to think big picture and to think about the impacts and the repercussions of decisions that we might make today on the future. And I've been in this district a really long time. I've learned in this district. I have become a parent in this district. And I think it's a really important value that we keep, like really, really important that we maintain this non-partisanship within our schools. And if we can do that just one step, like the initial step of keeping our elections in odd years, I, I think it might be worth it for the cost benefit, because there is a strategic way of doing things. And the cost out, like the outcomes of the costs may be a wash at the end of the day, especially when you're trying to recruit, like we talk about recruitment of great teachers all the time, and we put time and effort and resources into recruiting good staff. This also may be one of those things, where you want to recruit the best and the brightest out of your community. And in a community like Yezetta Public Schools, professionals don't want to have all of that noise around them. People who are going to be really good at this job of school boarding don't need all of that mess. And so, from, from Heidi Kater's perspective, I think we should stay in odd years. So that's my take.
I haven't spoken yet, if I could have a turn.
Let me just give a quick comment to Dana's comment earlier. Dana, I think if we stay with the right side of that chart, if we just keep doing odd year elections, we will have $100,000 every two years. So, yeah.
So I originally came to this, yeah, thinking it's the money savings, you know? And, and I'm, I'm in a position where I'm still like kind of torn, but I've kind of been convinced out of both options. You know, when I, we think about the cost savings, it's essentially one half full-time employee every year, which, you know, it doesn't sound like that much when you say it like that. It would be a recurring cost every year of 100,000, or every other year of $100,000 that we would save. But is that really in the, is it, that might just be a drop in the bucket. I've been, you know, I've previously mentioned our ask of voters, just, I know that for some people, I can, it can be difficult to go to the polls. Not everybody, you know, is, is able to go very easily. And asking them to go in odd years in addition to even years is, is an ask, and we have to acknowledge that. I am, I am convinced by the non-partisanship argument. I do think if board members from the top are showing, you know, like our commitment to nonpartisanship, that means something. There are forces outside of our control, including with the community that, you know, bring partisanship in whether we want it or not, whether it's even year or an odd year election, and we don't have control over that. But if we are making the commitment to say, like, we really are trying our best to make this nonpartisan, I think that does, that does have an effect. So again, I am still very torn about this, but I, you know, I, I don't know, I think I'm probably leaning more towards keeping even year elections more so than I was before. Sorry. I misspoke. I'm leaning more towards odd year, keeping the odd year elections.
Yeah, so I've, I've talked about history and stuff, but I, my thoughts. I think we, there's a couple of different things that we're trying to address. And, and I took very seriously some of the concerns that Amy raised around the legal liabilities. I took very seriously the, the concerns around the staff load and, and the all encompassing nature of that election. And certainly, we've seen that. And I took very seriously the, the comments about the institutional knowledge and, and the inability to have colleagues that are doing the same thing, running an election, I can only imagine is, is really, really hard. And we, and we certainly want you to feel supported and connected, or anyone sitting in your seat. We want you, we want the person sitting and running our election to, to feel confident in what they're doing, that they can uphold the election with the greatest amount of integrity and professionalism. And at the, and, and so, but all of those feel like things that we can solve without changing our structure. I mean, some of that, we can't make people change their elections, and so we might not have that. But I'm confident that we can find you, that we can find the person sitting in your seat, you or whoever else, the support that they need. And so, regardless of where this board decides to go, I think that that should be a, a priority of how we partner with the administration to make sure that that happens. I, I really sit in the, getting the issues out in front of the voters. I think that there really is something to be said to our community and to our children that says, in this moment, we're talking about you, and we're talking about the ways that we are going to make this better and the way that we're going to make our school district better. And you might not be able to calculate the dollar amount from what we're saving from running in the election and the amount that we're spending on, on communications and marketing and, and all the other things. But I've got to imagine that, that getting those issues out is, you know, is, is a thing. And, and then again, asking candidates to do the same thing and what we're asking them to spend in their time and energy. So those are my thoughts.
I'll quickly summarize what my thoughts are, because I was asking questions earlier, so I didn't put my points together. So again, in my opinion, I'm putting cost and efficiencies on top. Again, the partisanship, non-partisanship is absolutely critical. And quite frankly, I trust our community, Yezetta community. When I was running for election, or even after I got elected, every time I've talked to community members, parents, et cetera, they have always focused on the educational outcome and what can be done, and how can we solve challenge for students. So that's where my mind is. So if I look at cost, efficiencies and partisanship, I don't know how much that partisanship is going to change just because we are changing the school year election. And like I said, I might change my mind if suddenly I get flurries of email tomorrow from everyone who's listening to that yelling at me saying, what are you talking about? Then I might change it. But again, right now, I'm trusting our community to play that nonpartisan role in school board elections, because everybody's focusing on the, the educational outcome, which is good for everybody, even if you don't have schools or students in school. So outside of that, again, my point is, again, when I look at the cost and efficiency, I can't imagine spending $100,000 every four years or two years. Yeah. So again, that's where my head is. Again, I'm not disagreeing with the partisanship. I think we have done really good well, and Yezetta, I think Sarah you said is an example. But just by changing the election year, is that really going to change? Maybe I'm wrong, but again, that, that's where my head is. Okay. Thank you, Paris. Let me just say a couple of things that I forgot. I never mentioned the numbers, 5% in 2015, 2017, and I don't know how much it was in 19, 21, 23, 25%. 5% voters out of 40,000 plus voted for two elect, during two elections. That does not seem to be representative of, of, you know, voters that, that elect board members. That's, that's, that again is a, is a big point with me, the number of voters that vote, whether it is, you know, whether it's a partisan election or nonpartisan election, beyond that, the numbers that vote is very, very important. Also, at this board table, I have not seen any partisanship at all in any of the votes, any of the resolutions that we have made. There is no partisanship in a city council meeting. Nobody says, I'm a Democrat, so I'm going to vote this way. We see that in the state legislature though. They caucus with Democrats, the Republicans caucus with Republicans, they sit separately as Democrats and Republicans. I don't see where our partisanship shows, even if we are partisan outside. I may belong to a DFL party, I may belong to a Republican party, but I do not ever bring partisanship in my thoughts, in my, you know, in the process that we go through, definitely not when I'm voting. So I think this partisan, nonpartisan is, is overblown. We heard that during, during the election also. I remember one time when I was campaigning, based on my values, somebody labeled me as belonging to this one party. And I said, no, I'm running on a nonpartisan. These are my values. If you want to label me as a Republican or a Democrat, that's your choice. I'm not saying I'm a registered Democrat or I'm a registered Republican, so I'm running as one of those, right? We all have values, you cannot hide those. So based on the values, if you call me a Democrat or a Republican, then that's your choice. But I am not partisan when I have values that I, that I promote during my campaign.
I'm going to touch several things in train of thoughts. I am struggling with, to be honest, five year, from the perspective of when I run, I run for four years. And I feel like, oh, I'm going to take another year. It just like, how to say, behaving myself like almost like totalitarian, or I chose to be, to run one more year. I mean, to, so I, so be it, that, that, that one I'm struggling with. For example, if it would, if it wouldn't be, been election saying it is, this one is for five years because we want to do on even years. I can see even, everybody knows it, as if right now, I am in that kind of situation. When I run, it was for four years. And to be honest, I didn't know how much it takes. Now I know. Second is for, I kind of agree with Milent in this partisan, not partisan. I feel like we hang up on this so much, because even looking at the data, 5%, 5% of population were making choices for all of us. So it doesn't feel like many people were involved in making choice. Then when we're talking about nonpartisan, I guess that I am from different background and I might be straightforward a little bit. I, I felt differently. For example, 2021, I believe if I, when I pulled out accidentally data, quite a bit of money was spent on election. So it became quiet. And I myself never, ever thought that I will be doing and even knocking at the doors. But because I had values which I felt were trampled over, that's what moved me to do, to knock. that's what moved me to do, to knock at the doors. And speaking about nonpartisan again, this is a school board, I would like to remind, where a teacher union sent the brochure to housing. So no, please don't bring that that it's nonpartisan. It is. That money, when, to be honest, I personally, as a private citizen did, we run on a smidgen budget to the point where we were sitting and calculating where where we can put a sign because we didn't have that many signs. We didn't have budget for that. So please don't bring that one. And another one is unfortunately, sometimes I personally, when I was helping another candidate, I personally was an a witness how partisan it can become. When at Plymouth on Parade, the lady whom I was supporting was served with very, I mean, I don't know, should I, it's it's not for public in front of their own kids. That is how how people started acting out. And it's not for you to say that at the, for a while I carried spray with me. This is how I was concerned for my own safety. No, if you didn't experience it like you. To be honest, please, please don't do that. We all have some values and I appreciate when Milen pointed out. Just because, I mean, we we have values, we might disagree on same values. That's the whole point of democracy, that you can be sitting at the table and discuss, this is what we are doing, this is the, why, what the education for. I am very much so into in support of education. In fact, I think that I told also, and I know that some some of our board members probably annoyed by me. I came from being at the bottom of the barrel, an example. So I know what does it mean to feel and I know how much education can change students' life. That's the whole thing. I would like, for example, my own kids to have the same opportunity. Speaking about partisan, I don't want any partisan feelings and values to be pushed on our kids so that kids will get education, any kid will get education, will be strong academically. And then they will be able to compete, to succeed. They can, it is not a job of adult to put their values into students. Students can learn and when students, once they're adult, they can all make their own decisions. So that one I have a hard time. As for money wise, I think that money should not be. It's a lot of money sounding, but at the same time, the district which is dealing with over 260K budget. My feeling is more it's how many people are getting involved. When it, when it is about 5% are voting, is it actually the parents who are actually involved are making decision? I feel like it's a very small population is making decision for this big, this big district. Thank you.
Yeah, Dana.
Well, I did want to take a moment to, you know, sum up my remarks and kind of give my viewpoint on this. So I'm sure you all know kind of where I stand. To kind of, you know, perhaps, you know, reassure colleagues of some items and, you know, just give my viewpoint on some others. With what Paris, you know, you were asking about partisanship and the role of that. It's inarguable that it will. Those are the only events that voters are going to. You're going to have to throw in with those individuals. And to, you know, your point, Valentina, I actually really enjoyed having a very lengthy phone conversation with you the other day where you told me about your, you know, journey as an immigrant. And it was really a a special story to hear. But I am drawn actually to the, you know, argument and conversation around that percentage level of turnout. I think it's something we really can overcome. And I don't think that the 5% turnout, which is really a lowest low, is going to be anything we go back to, at least not in the near future. You know, when we look at what the turnout was in the midterm election for 2022, it was about 56%. I think we can go from 25% to 56%. We run really good candidates, they get their message out there, there's a lot of attention. That's only going to be made possible in a odd numbered year election. So I think it's it's on the candidates, it's on the community to really engage, really ask questions of their elected officials. So, you know, talking about the the financial side as well. I will definitely say that it bothers me as an individual when we talk about, you know, students, children as dollars and cents. That's something that, you know, I don't, I don't take too kindly to. And so I think that this is an investment and Wayzata is excellence. I think outstanding school districts make investments in excellence. And to me, this is one of them. So I will be voting to maintain the odd numbered year elections. Thank you.
I think we are done with a very healthy discussion. Thank you all. We appreciate it. Again, thank you, Amy. I I one other question that just came up when you were discussing. If we do come up, do decide to bring bring this to a vote on June 9th. I think I heard you mention that July 1st is the deadline for us to let them know, let the Secretary of State know. Now, from what I remember, the end of July, the last week of July and the first week of August are the filing periods. So would July board meeting not be appropriate? Would that be too late?
That would be too late for the November election. So at any point in time, the board, any board could make the decision. But the July 1st cutoff is for the current year, for fall elections. So yeah, so it would be too late if if that was the will of the board.
Even if the filing period is July end and.
That's correct. It's too late. Yeah, we've already actually started planning for the election.
Thank you for that. All right, if there are no other questions or comments.
Milen, one, just from the next step standpoint.
Yes.
If this were to come back for voting, are we going to have three choices or just yes and no? Because technically we have three choices, right? Yes and no. And then within yes, we have two.
So so what will happen is if we, this comes for a vote, so as you see on your screen, the first vote will.
Okay.
If if the majority votes no, it's done, right? Majority votes yes, then there are two choices again, five year term or three year term. So that again will be.
That will be another.
We'll have to take a vote on five year or three year, depends. But that can be done. There is a process for that.
Okay.
And there are there are written resolutions on how to do that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so this completes our work session for this evening. The next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, June 9th. The time is now 6:17. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education work session for Tuesday, May 27, 2025 is adjourned.